Oh, yeah, well, um, Harry and I were going to the Denver's White Turkey Deli. This is New York Yankees.
Oh, maybe it's him.
Yeah.
You have eighty-three thousand bucks for the season tickets for Yankees games?
For the championship, for the foot flights?
A salary.
I know they don't let you.
I share two tickets, three of them. And they're all the way upstairs, right in my house. Twenty-seven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January second meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission, both of you taking attendance. Mr. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Yurice?
Here.
Mr. Manuel?
Here.
Steve? Absent. Alaska is absent. Mr. Sermonara? Absent. And all the chairman, Ms. Hosta.
I'm here.
Um, Ms. Hosta, would you sit in this evening for Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, expecting a couple of people may come a little late. Um, for the record, our next meeting, there he is, alright. Let the record show that Mr. Manuel has arrived. I should have waited for you, Adam.
That's alright. Um, there's a lot of people waiting.
Are you finding the parking place empty?
It was.
The next, uh, our next regular scheduled meeting will be January sixteenth, two thousand and eight. Um, we did commission members receive the minutes from our meeting of November seventh, two thousand and seven. Um, I'll indicate a motion to accept unless there's any changes, corrections?
Uh, someone's second.
Motion to accept the minutes, basically, Mr. Yurice, secondly, Mr. Keller, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers in the back, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. It's approved. We will postpone acceptance of the minutes at the December nineteenth meetings. Uh, let the record show that Mr. Sermonara, Sermonara has arrived as well.
We can take those, right?
Yes, um, hold on one second.
You gotta reassess, you gotta do it. How do you?
No.
No, the only, um, yeah, okay, okay. Next to your reading.
Yeah, you're in. Yes. Yes.
Okay. Um, again, we'll postpone acceptance of the minutes from our December nineteenth meeting and we're in the process of editing our minds of those. Um, I realize that more people are here for the matter of MSW associates, uh, the matter of transfer station on sixteen Plum trees Road. Um, that's actually the third thing we get to this evening. Uh, first, we have a public hearing, uh, new public hearing, and we also, after that, will, under our continuation agenda, we'll be speaking to the matter of Sugar Hollow Road associates. Um, I was guessing, half hour, one hour before we get to MSW associates, just so everyone knows, just to warn everyone, have any false expectations, um, that will be the third thing we get to this evening. Um, we will proceed to our first public hearing this evening, the matter of CPs.
I'd like to welcome everybody back. Uh, before we get started on this next continuation of public hearing, I'd like to go on the record and see Mr. Sermonara for Mr. Penaldi. Mr. Sermonara, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I'd just like to, um, well, let me, let me read the, uh, public hearing and then I'll read a little comment. Continuation of public hearing, MSW Associates LLC, application for special exception to allow transfer station and volume reduction plant in the IG eighty zone, sixteen Plum trees Road, lot number L one three one four four, special exception number six six four. This application has received approval, public hearing open twelve nineteen oh seven. First thirty-five days will be up January twenty-third of oh eight. I'd also like to note that all the comments that were made at the last public hearing have become part of the public record. After the comments were made, my fellow commission members and I would like to ask you again to please not be redundant in your comments. If a point has been previously made at the last public hearing, please try your best not to repeat what has been said previously. Your cooperation in following these suggestions is greatly appreciated. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Tava?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. For the record, Gregory Tava, twenty-four Bank Street, New Milford, Connecticut, representing the applicant, MSW Associates LLC. When we were last here, uh, I promised you that we would address, uh, the issue of odor, and that's precisely where we're gonna start, uh, if, with the chairman's permission. Um, I have with me this evening, uh, Ted Wallenhut from, uh, Air One, uh, he's a principal at Air One, uh, which is a, uh, a company that handles, uh, these issues, uh, and handles systems primarily, um, related to, uh, these. I, I would like to present for the record, a copy of his qualifications, as well as a copy of a number of projects on which he has been involved. Uh, you will see when you look through this, uh, that they run the gamut, uh, from, uh, facilities, uh, that go from solid waste to energy facilities, to transfer stations, to, uh, other types of, of, of waste facilities, uh, throughout the, uh, New England region and the northeast, and many of these, uh, are of a size similar to the facility involved in this application, and, uh, some of them are larger and some of them are smaller, and I think it's a pretty good indication of the types of, of, uh, systems that have to be installed to deal with, uh, odor and, in some cases, dust issues. Um, I've, there are also some materials on the type of, um, of, uh, system that he's going to talk about that are in here, so I'm gonna submit this, a copy of this for the record, and, uh, without further ado, I'm gonna ask Mr. Wallenhut to come up and, uh, again, uh, begin his presentation.
Please note, uh, that this would be, is it an I, I believe, based on, uh, from the last, uh, I thought we had left off an H, but I believe we left off an I, then it would be J. Thank you, Mr. Tava.
Hi, Ted Wallenhut, Air One Inc., uh, air quality control systems company out of Wareham, Massachusetts, representing MSW Associates. Um, W O L L E N H A U P T. Yeah, I had to learn that in kindergarten. Um, I guess where to start would be with what's the standard in the industry today and, um, what we're proposing. Um, standard in the industry today for the facilities that I've worked at, as well as of other people in my business, usually use an atomized mist with an odor modifying agent. Um, and it works, it's somewhat effective, and it is a common practice, it is today the industry standard at a lot of these facilities. What we're proposing to do is use a mechanical system using carbon filtration, um, providing three air exchanges per hour of the, um, interior of the facility. We figured at this point, the inside of the building is about five hundred and ten thousand cubic feet. Um, each unit we're proposing to use has a capacity to treat one hundred and sixty thousand cubic feet per hour, um, which is three thousand cubic feet per minute. There's a little bit of pressure drop on the back end, so that's why we go from one hundred and eighty thousand down to one hundred and sixty. Um, the system will create a negative pressure within the building. How we will do this is by having, um, doors opening and closing throughout the period of the day, and then we will duct two or three of these units to the atmosphere, um, penetrating the eastern sidewall of the building. Um, that's the proposal that stands currently, that's the sidewall that's away from any of the, um, butters. Um, one of the other things I wanted to talk about was, um, using carbon, you know, we're looking at absorbing, we're not looking at adding something to modify or mask any odors. We're, we're using carbon, which is a natural absorbing agent, uh, it's been used in water filtration, air filtration for decades, um, very common practice, very effective against many of the odor causing compounds, to include ketones, amines, sulfites, fatty acids, and mercaptans, which are the typical odor causing compounds of decomposing material, um, also volatile organic compounds, which you will find in the municipal solid waste stream. Um, the system is designed to operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and basically, with the design that we've proposed, what we're proposing at this point, will, um, vacate the air within the building three times per hour. So every twenty minutes, the air within the building will be removed, treated, and, again, continually treated. It's a non-stop thing, it doesn't just turn on for twenty minutes, then turn off for twenty, it's constantly. And there's some literature that I passed in on the systems. The carbon is a replaceable, it does need to be replaced. Um, we anticipate that the carbon filters will have to be replaced on a monthly basis. Um, and there is also filtration media in there to protect the carbon from any dust particulates or any other particulates in the air, to prevent premature breakthrough. Breakthrough being when the carbon has absorbed to its capacity and it can no longer treat anything, the air would still pass through it, but would not be able to absorb any of the odor molecules within the air, or any other volatile organic compounds or molecules in that airstream that may be a contaminant. Um, so I think that pretty much covers the proposal at this point. Um, we're at about fifty percent design, we haven't put anything hard to paper at this point, we're still doing some further research, and would like to hear. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, commission members, questions to Mr. Wallenhut? Uh, yes, Mr. Yurice?
Can't get away that quickly.
Uh, the filtration system you're proposing, carbon filtration?
Yes.
The words are really technical.
Yes.
Now, how effective is that in filtering, or filtering out bacterial and viral elements in the waste that's being processed or?
It's not designed to treat bacterial or viral components. You could use an ultraviolet light or, um, some other type of, um, system in that respect. There are systems that can be implemented.
That method you propose, and then you're?
Haven't looked at bacterial or viral at this point.
It's been, I'm sure there will be no, we'll be on the doors, we'll go in and back. Um, but just the nature of this operation, which requires opening the bay doors for trucks that are delivering to come in and out, and of course, you know, they smell whatever they smell, as they're walking in and backing in and doors are closing, and then the other side has to be opened up as containers are filled, pushed outside, run over to the store in the yard someplace, and mutator put in its place, and the doors are closing in that time. Now, I don't know how much time that occurs on that side, but with, uh, you know, a hundred and so trips a day, certainly the doors on the inbound side are up and down with a fair amount of frequency.
Yes.
Now, I can, I'm just, I'm not, you know, air scientist, but whenever you're raising those doors, if we're just talking about what's inside the building?
Yes.
Regardless, the rest of trucks coming in and out, what's inside the building, in order to keep that, you've gotta have a filtration system that sucks so much air, without an open bay door, doesn't allow the air to air out. Is that a reasonable statement of how this thing has to work?
That's correct, you need to have make-up air to create negative pressure. If we don't have an opening for air to come into this building, if you think of it, if this system treats one point five million cubic feet per hour, and we only have five hundred thousand cubic feet of building, we, in theory, implode the building, suck itself into itself.
Um, if you will, the vacuum that's, that's normal is when those big bay doors are open, and you're saying that there's no odor escape during periods of time?
What I'm saying is that the system's designed to continue to keep a negative pressure for a period of time, up to about, uh, four minutes with one door open, that is correct.
About two doors, huh?
That may create a different issue.
About three doors, huh?
Might get worse.
About three doors and one of the outgoing, and one of the outgoing. So, for this to work, it pretty much, we're talking one door open at a time?
Yes, as designed right now.
Okay. If there's, to be no odor emanating from this project, uh, outside the building, how do we account for whatever odor is being called in, queued in the driveway, waiting in at the docks, until it's pulled out, and then the empty vehicle leaving? How?
That's a good question, I can't speak to that, I can, I can only speak to the system that I've designed for the interior of the building to keep orders from emanating from outside the building.
Right, it's a little bit of a loaded question, but, you know, as representative, will we know odor flees this facility, at least to let Sermonara do the testing? Um, I, I guess for the filtration system, that's, that's kind of, until I read your material, I'm probably all in.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Yurice, Ms. Hosta.
Um, we actually, we actually, uh, the only thing I would add is, I mean, if we do need a, we would probably need a management system to make sure the proper number of doors are open and not open, you know, to manage, um, to, to make your, um, system work properly.
Yes.
Is that?
It would, it would, the system will rely on, you know, proper operation and maintenance of the facility and the systems themselves.
Well, that would have to be in the plan, as you present your?
Yes, we, we would have, we would have some type of operations and maintenance protocol.
Thank you, Ms. Hosta. Um, Mr. Yurice, just one other thing, on, on the changing of the carbon filters, I understand the process, um, but you're anticipating it'll be changed monthly, and with a fairly consistent flow-through, you know, there should probably be a pretty consistent change, but what's the basis of that, that it should be changed monthly, but as opposed to bimonthly or about weekly, or?
Well, um, the anticipation of changing it monthly is based on the known lifespan of the filtrate, of the carbon filters in a, um, environment where diesel trucks constantly go in and out of facilities, and they're turned on and off, these systems were originally designed for that. The carbon filters lifespan at those facilities is two to four years, so I'm anticipating that, basically, it's an untruth, but it could hold true at some point, that every load is contaminated with odors, it's heavily loaded with odors, and that every truck is emitting full diesel fumes the whole time in the building. So the one month is a very conservative number. It, it, we may find that this may go longer, you might be able to get two months out of the filters, you might be able to get longer than that, but to be realistic and not over-optimistic, I think one month is a reasonable approach.
And how would you know that you don't, you won't necessarily scent the output?
Um, that's, odor's subjective, that's, that's the problem, you could smell something at a much lower threshold than I could, and there really is no mechanism to measure odors, there's detection, but no measurement, and that's the subjective part of odor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yurice. Um, Ms. Amger and Ms. Hosta.
I just, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just would request that the applicant provide additional copies for the commission of the package you just handed out.
I think they only gave us one, right?
Yes, they only gave us one, it would be nice for the commission to have copies.
So we can tell you.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Hosta, a question?
Yes, um, at the last session of the public hearing, we heard about that there may be, um, a misting system installed to handle, um, excess dust that might be in the building. Um, how would that interact with your system? Would it, are you accountable to the fact that they might have one of those, and how does that work? I mean, could you be blowing out air as you're dropping mist?
Yes, um, using an atomized mist system, this system is not affected in that respect by, um, the humidity level that's added into a building. Um, these units would be below the level, probably right at about the same level as the nozzles that would be used to create the atomized mist to suppress the dust, and the atomized mist system would be in, if needed, because the filtration system we're proposing has what's called an auto-roll filter, and what that does is that filters out the dust particulates prior to anything getting into these filters, and with the amount of air we're talking about moving throughout this building, we'll be able to capture a larger volume of dust that is created, and there's, there's maybe some things that, um, aren't clear here, but construction demolition debris is what generates dust, municipal solid waste is what generates odors, and we're talking a split stream here, so you're not gonna see typically, I've done this for fifteen years, and I've been to a multitude of facilities, you don't see at a mixed-stream facility, five hundred tons a day of MSW, and then the next day, five hundred tons a day of C and D. You see a diverse mix of materials at any given moment. And the way I understand the facilities to be designed is that we're to have a C and D side, if you will, because you don't wanna mix the streams either sometimes, you wanna try to keep the stream separated, so that if you are doing any type of removal activity, you can do that. Um, so, again, it doesn't, it's kind of neither here nor there, but the air system we're proposing will assist with removing dust and controlling dust within this building, and if it is proven to be necessary later on, or by calculation that we'd need another atomized, um, atomized mist system to control dust, we would be prepared to deal with that.
Alright, so, um, the, you know, the moisture is not acting in terms of efficiency of your own system?
No.
Ms. Amger, and then Mr. Matt.
Sorry, um, on, on that point, how will you handle, how will you handle the construction, the dust coming from the construction debris that's outside?
I can't answer that at this point, I'm just, I'm just.
I understand you can't, but that's, that's an issue that was just brought up that, that should be addressed by the applicant.
Mr. Matt, I just, I'm curious about the operations and maintenance of these, of these facilities, and what, uh, what provisions you have in those operations for, for inspections or monitoring?
Um, I don't have an answer for you at this point with respect to an operations and maintenance manual of the system or this facility. Um, again, this system's about fifty percent designed, we can easily create an operations and maintenance manual for the systems that we will put in place with respect to the facility and the operations and maintenance of that, and other aspects of it, I'd have to defer to others.
Mr. Matt, with regards to the material that you presented, are some of these other facilities, any documents identified in there, are they similar in, in a sense to what's being proposed here, that we might be able to just get an idea?
Yes, there's a mixed-stream facility that we just, um, completed work at in Hollis and Massachusetts, it was in late summer of this year, where we put in, um, ten of these airmation, air filtration, air purification units, um, and the facility is a, it's a bigger facility, it's an eight hundred and fifty ton a day facility, um, and it also has a C and D component, uh, which is down low, and we're putting in a, because they're two separate portions, we're putting in a misting system down low in the C and D facility, the MSW facility has the air purification system. Um, it's a larger facility, it accepts a lot more tons per day, um, you know, almost twice what this facility's proposing, perhaps some things that should be noted with facilities in general, is that typically, the larger the facility, the more tonnage it brings in, the more problems it has, potentially has to arise. Um, smaller facilities like this one, five hundred tons a day or less, are managed differently because the material in has to get out quicker, you don't wanna keep it around, it doesn't make sense, you don't have the room, so the potential for odors generated at a five hundred ton per day facility when compared to a three thousand ton per day facility, the odor magnitude is significantly less with respect to the potential for generation of odors or nuisance conditions.
Thank you, uh, commission members, other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, one of the other issues we wanted to address were some remaining questions, uh, on the, uh, issues related to noise and sound, and we, we've asked Mr. Mr. Smartin, Alan Smartin from HMB Acoustics, uh, to come back up, and I'd like him to explain a couple of the concepts that were talked about last time to dispel a couple of, of questions that were left hanging, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Alan Smartin, HMB Acoustics. I was gonna try to explain some of the questions that were raised, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. Um, the following information that I'm going to, uh, speak about is based on using the DBA scale, which is used because it closely approximates the response characteristic of the human ear to loudness, and is a scale used in most regulatory criteria, including the Danbury Noise Code. Now, the noise levels inside the building that enclose the operation, uh, during the unloading process is approximately eighty DBA, that's an average, and these are numbers that were taken by myself and other transfer facilities. Um, the building will reduce the noise level to the outdoors by thirty DBA at a distance of ten feet from the building. If you subtract the thirty DBA reduction from the eighty DBA inside the operation, uh, level, then you come out with a fifty DBA number at approximately ten feet from the wall of the building. The distance from the building to the nearest residence at the Housing Authority complex is two hundred and thirty-five feet. By using the standard distance, uh, equation in acoustics, the noise level reduces by six DBA for each doubling of the distance, so if we double the distance each time from ten feet to two hundred and thirty-five feet, you'll reduce the noise level by twenty-seven DBA at the nearest residence, with two hundred and thirty-five feet that we just talked about. This results in a noise level of twenty-three DBA. As an example, a typical rural residential area background noise level at night is forty DBA. The projected noise level of twenty-three DBA is seventeen DBA below the most stringent nighttime noise level in a rural residential area. Now, it's important to note that, that DBA is measured on the log rhythmic rather than a linear scale. Every increase or decrease of ten DBA represents a change in level of approximately two hundred percent. A forty DBA noise is therefore two times as intense as a thirty DBA noise. The twenty-three DBA calculated background noise level at the nearest residence that I just talked about is almost four times, or four hundred percent below, sorry.
Excuse me one second, sorry, I was hoping you'd be able to finish, but it didn't work out. You didn't talk fast enough. Okay, you're back on.
Okay. Just to repeat, it's about four times or four hundred percent below the forty DBA background noise level used as the example that, that I was just talking about. When the noise level is this far below the existing background noise level, the applicant's noise level will be inaudible. Now, we're talking about the operation inside the building. The next concern was the truck noise. There are three noise regulations that apply to trucks in the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut noise regulations, under exclusions, states that "sound created by any mobile source of noise, such as, but not limited to, aircraft, automobiles, trucks, and boats. This exclusion shall cease, shall cease to apply when a mobile source of noise has maneuvered into position at the loading dock, or similar facility, has turned off its engine and ancillary equipment, and has begun the physical process of removing the contents of the vehicles." This is in the state of Connecticut Noise Regulation, section twenty-two eight dash sixty-nine dash one point seven I, under exclusions. The next regulation that I'll refer to is the Danbury Noise Code itself. Under section twelve dash fourteen D one, Truck Idling, it states, "No person shall operate, uh, an engine or any standing motor vehicle with a weight in excess of ten thousand pounds, manufacturer's gross vehicle weight, for a period in excess of ten minutes when such vehicle is parked on residential or, uh, residential property, or on non-residential property which is adjacent to residential property." property, or if it's on a public street when such engine or vehicle is within 100 feet of residential property." This is the Danbury Code now. The last one I'd like to quote is that the state of Connecticut also has a regulation called noise levels for vehicles. This is referenced in the, in the Danbury Noise Code for, for mobile sources of noise. And this is section 14-80A-1 through 14-88-18. This deals with permitted noise level of 82 DBA at a distance of 50 feet from, from the truck and at a constant rate of speed. Now, similar trucks that I measured from other transfer stations had an average noise level of 65 DBA at, at 50 feet. If this level was extrapolated to the nearest residence of 235 feet, the resultant noise level would be 47 DBA. And at 800 feet, the approximate distance to the nearest residence at Arlington Woods, the level would be 35 DBA. These levels are well below the allowable level set forth in the regulations for truck compliance.
Can I just, I have my end checked for a second. Ms. Senator, the closest residence I thought was East Drive, maybe. What is the distance though? It's less than 235 feet. I just want to make sure I'm clear on the distances here. I thought it was closer than that based on our last conversation. I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
At this point, I'm confused as well.
Okay. That was my impression. I thought 235 feet is Arlington Woods.
235 feet I was given as the closest residence to the housing complex to the west.
Yeah, actually, we're going to, I probably should have, in retrospect, I probably should have put that, that question ahead of Mr. Smartin's, but we actually are going to, we're going to give you distances to the residences and what you're going to find from those is that the distance, again, what he is, what he's expressing is not the distance to the property line. He's expressing the distance to the nearest residence, okay? And that distance is 235 feet to the Housing Authority complex. It's, it's some 770 feet.
I thought it was 85 to the property line. Okay.
Yeah, it may be less to the property line, but, but the distance to the nearest residence because there were concerns about disturbing people when they're sleeping. So, we're trying to get some sense of that, that that was what was expressed last time. And I think what you're going to find is 235 feet to the nearest unit in this complex.
Okay, just there was a little bit of confusion by myself on that. Thank you.
The, the information that I was given on the property lines, the closest property line to the housing complex is 160 feet. That's the information that I have.
From where?
From the building, from the enclosed building on the applicant's site.
Okay, just to make sure that we're very clear on this.
Oh, no, yes. I was using the resident, the closest to the residence itself as opposed to the property line.
Okay, thank you. Continue, please.
Sure. So, these levels are well below the allowable level set forth in the regulations for truck compliance for all three of the regulations that I stated. I stated the state of Connecticut's because they exclude all mobile sources of noise until basically they're, they're stopped. Danbury allows a 10-minute idling process but doesn't put any noise level on the truck itself. The state of Connecticut, and they refer to the state of Connecticut's noise levels for trucks, the one I just gave you at 82 DBA for 50 feet at constant speed, 10,000 pounds or more.
So, excuse me, so when you looked at this, you didn't really think about what the maximum number of idling trucks might be?
No.
Thank you.
One last, one last thing. There was a question about wind, if wind was blowing in the direction of the, of the residences. The effect of wind or wind direction is at most a secondary influence to sound propagation. A, a six to 20 mile an hour wind is negligible when you consider the speed of sound which is much, much faster. Based on all of these factors, the noise regulations that pertain to the enclosed building for the operation and the trucks that will be associated with the operation, that's where I drew my conclusion that there would be no problem as far as noise is concerned. I just tried to give you more detail than I did before, but that's where, where I drew it from. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Commission members? Ms. DeRozan?
I just, have a, this is based, your estimates are, based on one truck idling, I said, next to the building, that far away, that's about as close as possible.
Yes.
First distance to the standard. And?
But can I add one thing?
Please.
In acoustics, if you double the noise source, if you double it, you add 3 DBA to that noise source, it would still be well below the admissible levels by the regulations.
Now, in your measurements that you took in a MSD station or a transfer station that you then did for similar trucks that you might anticipate longer, I assume those are inbound trucks, not the big diesel state of the country or nothing like that.
Well, yes, the both.
Both, okay. And you're calculating the DBA drop based on the theory. And have you ever actually taken from a distance and measured the DBA levels?
Many, many, many times. And it's not theory.
Is it consistent with the theory in application?
Yeah, this is, this is in all the acoustics books also. The only difference that you would find beside the 6 DB drop off depends on topography, reflective surfaces, absorbing surfaces, things of this nature. But if you take a flat plain with nothing, assuming there's nothing there between the noise source and the receiver, the 6 DB works extremely well, yes.
What would be the implication of three, or five, or six, or seven, or eight, or nine, or 10 vehicles idling in queues?
At the same time.
At the same time.
It would increase, it would increase the noise level, sure.
How does that work? exponentially, linearly?
And the setting of how much would increase?
Oh, yeah. Again, in acoustics, if you double the noise source, you increase it by three. If you double, let's say you go from one noise, one truck to two, you'd increase it by 3 DBA.
Okay.
Then you go from two to four, it's another three. Four to eight.
Experiments starting with the noise source, whether 10 DBA or 50 DBA, you put two of those together, you want to go up 3 DBA.
Three. And I, here's, here's the, I'm assuming.
And it falls in the same exponential?
Oh, yes, yeah. This is, again, assuming all of the trucks have the same type of engines and so forth. You don't have a gutted muffler, you don't have, you know, whatever. You just have to make this type of an assumption, yeah.
What the differential is between one truck being there and certain setting?
And four or five trucks being, you know, idling at the same time. Oh, the level would go up, there's no question. I'm just trying to point out what, what the levels would be assuming all the trucks were idling at the same, same RPM, same topography.
And I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, no matter whatever the original DBA is based on what's there originally, the increase is still only going to be 3 DBA based on the number of additional trucks you're adding.
I don't.
So, if your, if your original noise level is 60, say.
Okay.
Right, so then you add two trucks, it's going to go up by a certain number. And say the original noise level is half that much, it's still going to increase at the same level no matter whatever the original level of noise was?
Yeah.
I think that's what you said before.
Yes, if you double the noise source.
Can I let this go?
Yeah, no, if you double the noise source, again, whatever it happens to be, it'll go up at that, at that, at that rate, yes.
Did you just say if you double the noise source by two trucks, you double the?
No, it goes up by three.
By three. Which is roughly 30%?
No, no.
10 DBAs is a double?
It's, 10 DBA is a doubling. But it's, it's logarithmic, so three, the 3 DBA is not 30% like you would think it would be.
It's two.
Yeah, it would, yeah. It would be less than that.
So, if you have two trucks as compared to four trucks, that's again a doubling?
Correct.
Ms. Hotstetter?
Um, I, based on the traffic study here, I came out with 13 trucks per hour. So, instead of saying whatever it is, why don't we, let's, you know, get down to the number per hour if we could. Maybe you would figure that you would have trucks that are idling and you would have trucks that are moving up in the queue. So, you're going to have both types of noises. I know you mentioned something about only measuring when they idle, but in truth or matter of fact, you're going to have a lot of noise when they move and there's going to be a lot of trucks per hour moving. So, you know, based on all of that and the statistics, measured within 10 feet from the building, what would be the accumulated DBA for some of those trucks idling and some of those trucks?
I have, I have to interrupt that for one second because, yeah, I'm sorry, I have, I have to interrupt you because what, what, what Mr. Smartin said, and the premise of your question is flawed because those trucks could be making 100 or 200 or 500 DBAs, they are exempt from regulation under Connecticut law when they're moving. It's only when they're idling that they're subject to any regulation under Danbury regulations or under the state regulations. So, so the idea of moving trucks.
One person at a time, please.
I'm sorry, so the idea of moving trucks adding to the noise, they're exempt from regulation at that point. You can't regulate them, so there's, there's really no point, but you can say what it is, but there's no point.
Hold on, Mr. Mann, one second. Just one, are you going to respond at all to her comments?
Well, I think, I think what you were saying was that you were talking about the trucks, my, my, my statements before about, you were trying to relate the trucks at 10 feet away from the building. I was talking about the operation inside the building. The attenuation of the walls of the building, the structure itself, will reduce the noise level to the outdoors by 30 DBA at a distance of 10 feet. That was for the operation, not the trucks.
Oh, okay.
The truck references that I made by, by all of the state regulations is really all I can go by was at 50 feet, a measurement of, at 50 feet.
Right.
Then what I can do is I can extrapolate that either closer or farther away, but the 50 feet is where you, you start with the regulations.
All right, well, you consider 13 trucks per hour and what would be in your mind in terms of DBA levels at the 230-foot residence?
That would be the same 20, at, at, at 65 DBA measured at, at 50 feet, we'd, we'd do the same doubling again. We would say 50 feet to 100 feet would be a reduction of six. 100 to 200 feet is another six, or a total of 12. You would take 12 off the 20, off the 65.
So, that goes back, excuse me, Ms. Hotstetter.
But that's one truck.
That's one truck.
That goes back to what you said before about 23 to 235 feet?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's one truck, but if there's 13 in an hour, there's some maybe say after that, six, seven trucks at, there at the same time, which does the noise level?
All right, so you're saying there's 13 trucks there at the same time, all of them idling?
Yes.
At the same time?
Okay.
Well, then, now you're dealing with another number. It's, the moving vehicle was 65. The idling truck, I have no idea what the idling truck would be except to know that it would be less than the 65 DBA.
Oh, I'm sorry, but you said the idling truck was measured at 62 DBA?
No.
All right, I'm taking notes.
The regulation states 82 DBA at 50 feet. I measured 65 DBA at 50 feet.
That's for an idling truck?
That's for a moving truck.
Oh, okay.
At constant speed, I was reading it, constant speed on the road. I, I think, I was referring to the idling part in this, in the Danbury Noise Code which talked about idling.
Okay, so do we have a measurement for what the idling truck's DBA will be?
No, I, no, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Mann? Yeah, if we could possibly get that, you just kind of got around that for 15 minutes. Now, Mr. Mann, a question?
I, I'm, I'm really confused as to the relevance of the regulations and the noise regulations itself because it seems to me that we have to judge how much noise this facility is going to make and whether or not it's in excessive what the law allows on a street. We have to decide whether there's too much for this neighborhood. And that's my point. And I want to know then what, what you really have to think about is the backup noises too.
Yeah, I have that information.
Okay, go ahead.
The measurements that I took of the existing background noise levels at the housing complex were 50 to 52 DBA. That's back, existing background. Using the numbers that I was giving you here with the 65 DBA and the extrapolation back to that 235 feet, you're now talking about 53 DBA which is about the same as the existing background. This is on the moving trucks now, not the idling trucks.
We're going to need that information on the idling trucks.
And, and what about the backup? The backup of signals? What are the DBA of the?
The backup signals, although they're also excluded from the regulation, but I know you're, you're not interested in that, there's, by, by state standard, there's supposed to be 90 DBA at four feet. If you, again, extrapolated the four feet back to the 235 feet, is, you know, what would people hear at that distance from the backup alarm? It would be about, it would be roughly 30, 35 DBA reduction. You'd be down into the low 60s, let's say, or 60 DBA. No, it'd be 55 DBA, I'm sorry, 35 from the 90. Again, that would be similar to the background levels that, existing background levels that were measured. But you're going to have, the backup is going to be going toward the building with the door open as he backs into the building and the, and the level will be lower and I can only take a guess at, at what that would be.
We've got a lot of, a lot of numbers thrown out here on decimal information. Do we have, is the report that he's provided, does that have all this information in here? Because I think we really need to have all of these numbers really set in stone as to addressing, you know, all of these distances, the accurate distances because we've heard a lot of numbers thrown out here.
I understand.
They tend to overlap each other for a while. I want to make sure we have everything really set and clarified.
On that point, would we also be able to get a set of assumptions on which the noise levels are based that pretty accurately reflect what's going on here, which would be some trucks moving, some trucks idling, some trucks backing up with the ocean?
They would, they would be assumptions, yes.
And, and, you know, how many, and some doors opening and closing and all that stuff. That's all noise only. So, a set of assumptions that says, you know, 13 trucks an hour, this is, you know, three of them backing up every, you know, whatever. So, we have an accurate.
Just have to work on that.
No, you want to hold on for a second. Let's just finish here and then if you want to adjust it, that's fine. Okay. Any, any other questions from the commission members? Mr. Smart?
There is a question about the plantings in the back and I guess there was some statements made about that the plantings were going to buffer the noise levels also. Were there any specific measurements taken on that or what assumptions were made about, you know, any noise reduction, how much it was for those assumptions? And did you use, was it based on mature trees or how tall these trees that we, we heard about that's tall?
Yeah, I did, in my report, I did reference the topography on a, on an upgraded topography with the new plantings of, of the evergreen trees. And I pointed out that, that, that the total noise reduction from all of that over, over the distance again of 235 feet would be 6 DBA.
Now, just to follow up on Ms. Hotstetter's question, how long would it take these trees to mature? I'm not sure if you could answer that question, but, you know, with new plantings, I'm not sure if it would buffer the sound as it would say maybe after 10 years when the trees are more mature.
I was using a four to six foot height and this is the type of thing I've measured before. As far as growth potential, I would have no idea, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Senator, do you have any commission members? Any comments? Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just want to ask Alan, these numbers you gave, 60 plus, that's okay for that point. No, no, that point, I understand, just that those numbers were more familiar.
Yeah. And, and? No, I, I just wanted to be, be sure that the correct answer was given the commission. That's good, Alan. You know, I, I think I want to change the order of my presentation slightly to ask for some information. information related to the distances. Mark, are you going to address that? Just because that issue came up, and I'd like to make sure that we've covered it so we can end any confusion.
Good evening, once again, for the record. My name is Mark Sessom from the Maker Engineering Services Incorporated in the last century We look at the site plan, showing where the existing building is, as well as the property line and the curb line along the apartments to the west, and also afterwards I'll refer to the overall aerial photo. There were quite a few distances to the property lines, into the wood lines, the wetland line, to the building itself. One of the things that is adding to the confusion, which that was probably for some of it, but the building is straight, the property line is not straight. The curve in the road, and then we'll see on the other photo that the adjoining building is also skewed to that. You can see here the distance to 30-scale map, each inch on the map is 30 feet. It's about five inches to the very closest point on the property line. Some of the wetlands are on the other side of the property line, some are on the east side of the property line. But at the nearest point, just the property line is about 150 feet. You'll notice also at that point that that's not the tip floor, end of the building. The tip floor is over here, there are no doors here for trucks to back and tip. There's actually no vehicular access, the curb line is here. So the closest point, if people ask a specific question, or myself or Mr. Crinbo, being our nature, we answer very specifically. The closest point is here, but that is not where the tip floor is. Just like the closest point here, the wetlands are on the other side of the road, the closest point here is irrelevant now, but that's the closest point. There's some discussion about trailers, which aren't here, they're over there. But speaking to the point of the matter here, the closest point, the property line here is there, actually sectioned through the building. We had given that section to Mr. Smartin to the adjoining buildings, and the distance we gave was 235 feet, and that's what the distance is. We look at this now, shown our building, this building, once again, the skew of that there, the closest point's 235. You can see the apartment building is skewed. You can also see, if I bring it closer, or if you can tell what these things are, this is the driveway, this is parking cars, then there is a grass strip, then the adjoining building. So the distance is, once again, to the property line or to the facility, shown on this map. When Sid brought up, compared the map, he just picked up the curb line, thinking at the time that was the only thing relevant. But you can see here, even on this map, the curve, like two of those curving over there, skews away, and you can see pretty much that's where the curve is. Now, to other adjacent facilities, the 800 feet, 820 feet is to the east, Arlington Woods Apartments. There was also some questions while I'm here, talking about distances. The Woodland Hills Clubhouse, which is actually just about opposite the driveway, Arlington Woods, it's about 1,600-plus feet. To the nearest units in Woodland Hills, which are the units off the first cul-de-sac, past their clubhouse on the left, you can pull into their driveway, the semicircular driveway would be down in this area, it's about 1,800 feet. So the distances Mr. Smartin was referring to earlier, and that's, you know, past the junkyard and through that, in woods, but nonetheless, you can see there. While I'm here, I also wanted to, just for references, points, we had some other distances. From the apartment building here to the sewage treatment plant, buildings here, about 165 feet. To the nearest tanks over here, 185 feet. And to these open tanks in this building, it's about 350 feet. There's several tanks, as you can see, closer to these buildings than in fact the transportation building would be to the other parts. Lastly, there's about a 15-foot elevation difference between the grade proposed on the finished floor here to the lowest point on the driveway over here. In between there'd be retaining walls with the trees on top, and then beyond that, there was some question about the maturity of the trees. All this area is wooded. This area is also wooded, which will receive supplemental trees. And these plantings are six-foot minimum height on each of the, at planting each of the white pines, Norway spruce and Colorado spruce. Six-foot minimum at plantings, as indicated on the planting table. And the height of maturity, which was also asked for by the city, 50 to 80 feet, 40 to 60 feet, 30 to 60 feet, respectively, on the white pines, Norway spruce and Colorado spruce. Mr. Crinbo, the landscape architect, who prepared the landscape plans here if you want to ask any other questions about vine trees or any of the other conditions.
Questions for Mr. Sessom? Mr. Sessom?
Distances. Looking at the northwest corner of the plant?
Yes.
Where the trailer park is?
Yes.
The highway is sticking out just to the south edge of that, and says the limit were trailer, roof, park, that would be full of whatever.
Those are the trailers, or either empty or full trailers, that they can store.
Those will be parked for a while, you know. What's the distance from the edge of that block to the nearest property line and then the nearest apartment, which would be under the housing?
From the very corner, these two walls closest to the property line, the wall here kicking out, and these walls, just over 70 feet perpendicular to the property line.
And to the, and to the housing authority from the same point.
Perpendicular, once again, the shortest distance is just over 130 feet to the curb.
So 130 feet is the nearest
Distance.
Distance between store guardage and human habitat.
That's the curb line. That's the curb line for the road. I put it on about 200 feet or so. We can ask the surveyors who actually surveyed that, if you'd like, but within a few feet, I'd say it'd be about 200 feet due to the skew in the building to the actual building.
What is the difference in the 200, what's the 70-foot difference between 200 and 130 is given?
The distance between the curbing, then there's a road, then there's parking, then there's a grass strip, then there's the building itself.
So the curbing would be close to people who normally travel in that direction.
So if they were in your car, there would be, from the trailer to there would be about 135 feet or so.
And that northwest corner there, that's closest to the housing authority development. I don't see any new plant and trees there, just see woods. Is there any other additions to landscape up there as well?
There are, there are existing trees, the significant ones were surveyed in, but there's also a planting schedule and a note that the total number of trees, but rather than putting them exactly at any one point, we gave a rate of planting and a number of additional plantings so that they can be stationed in the field to avoid other existing trees. We didn't see the sense to knock down a tree to put another tree up.
That's perfectly sensible.
So that, that's what this whole cross-asked area is, when we went through the EIC approval process, that was the agreement that was reached with Mr. Pudding and the EIC.
Commission members, any other questions for Mr. Sessom? Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Thank you, Mark. Yes, another issue that you had asked us to address last time was the apparent conflict between Section 1D3 of the zoning regulations and 16A92 of the Code of Ordinances. And in regard to that, we had my co-counselor, Joseph Bragley of the firm of Sullivan Bragley and Eberhart, prepare a letter addressing that issue. That letter has been sent to Mrs. Aminger, and I'm prepared to deliver to you the original of the letter and a number of copies this evening, and if you have questions for Mr. Bragley, he is here this evening, or if you prefer to wait until you've addressed it with your counsel, that's fine, too.
Maybe Mr. Bragley could just summarize what's in the letter? Yes, this would be exhibit K for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Acting Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Joseph Bragley. I practice law at 133 Deer Hill Avenue here in Danbury. Essentially, the response is twofold. One is that the section itself is unconstitutional as drafted. There is some reference in my correspondence to a previous case, P&amp;G Sanitation versus City of Danbury, that in which a stipulation was entered, city agreed not to enforce the statute. And secondly, the position is that the ordinance is not necessarily inconsistent with the application. There are things that are not governed by the ordinance that the applicant could accept, for example, recyclables, C&amp;D, things of that nature.
Thank you, commission members. Anything this time?
Oh, yes, I, uh...
Want to, you want to take a look at it?
Yes, probably.
Would you like anything this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Yes, we had a number of leftover question items that I want to address. I'd like to ask David Brown to come up and address this issue of the number of trucks and how that was determined. Sorry, there was a question about that.
Good evening, for the record again, my name is David Brown. The request was made at our last meeting night for us to explain how we arrived at the estimated 105 trucks and a maximum 500-ton per day delivery rate. And it was developed as follows. We assume that approximately 50% of that maximum 500 delivery day would be typical, what we would call in the industry, roll-off trucks delivering construction and demolition debris. And we used in this calculation an average of five tons per vehicle, five net tons per vehicle delivery. So at, again, assuming that the facility were receiving the maximum permitted volume that the applicant is proposing, 250 tons would be construction and demolition debris. At five tons, that's 50 truck deliveries. We then assumed approximately 45% of that maximum delivery day would be tonnage related to what we call MSW, mixed municipal solid waste. The assumption on net payload for that calculation was 7.5 tons per delivery. And that yields an estimated 30 trucks. We made a further assumption, I'm going to come back and talk about each of these assumptions when I'm finished presenting how the calculation was made. The remaining 5%, we assumed, or 25 tons, were in what we call small-volume customers with an average of one ton per vehicle. And that would yield 25 inbound vehicles. So if you add those numbers up, you get 105, and that's how we did the math as we were beginning our planning process on the project. I'd like to, first of all, talk about the conservative nature of these assumptions. In my little note sheet that I'm looking at here, I have the MSW first, I'll talk about that one first. Typically, what you see, this is...
Do you want to hand these in?
You're welcome to.
Yeah.
What is it that we have?
Copies of what he's looking at, that way you can...
Thank you. We'll, as exhibit L, for the record.
Is there a title on there?
What is the title of that?
Proposed traffic volumes.
Please continue, Mr. Manuel.
Thank you. The MSW assumption of 7.5 tons, first of all, this development is based on the recognition that this is a commercial facility. It's not a residential drop-off station, it's not a facility that's, I know there is a facility here in Danbury that has an agreement to accept residents. That's not what we're talking about here, and that's not the concept that's been discussed. We're talking about commercial trucks. And typically, the commercial MSW trucks, they've grown tremendously over the past 20 years in time. There was one, there was a time when most all of the MSW was collected in what they called rear loader trucks, and you might remember back, and there's still some of those on the road today. But what's happened is the industry has grown, and typically what you'll see are 10 tons or more in these large front-end loader trucks. Consequently, we saw the assumption of an average of 7.5 tons to be a very conservative and reasonable assumption for that purpose. Also, with construction and demolition debris, it's not unreasonable to encounter deliveries that can be eight or 10 tons in a truck. And we see the five-ton assumption also to be a very conservative assumption in that regard. And finally, the small-volume customers, a facility like this may, would typically have a one-ton minimum charge. Small-volume customers are primarily contractors who would be self-delivering material to the facility. It might be a dump truck bringing in roofing materials or something of that nature. And these customers are going to be customers that are looking to avoid the expense of engaging a hauler or a contractor, so they're going to self-deliver material to the facility. Typically, we would expect the actual rate of delivery from these small- the actual rate of delivery from these small-volume customers to be very small. In fact, I, you know, I would expect that 1% or 2% of the tonnage, I would not expect to see 25 tons coming in, or even this amount of trucks coming in using customers of this type. I'm happy to answer questions. This is how we developed that estimate. This is the original presentation that we developed some time ago.
Mr. Matt?
What about trucks leaving?
All of these trucks will leave the facility.
But what about the trucks that are hauling it out?
Oh, trucks hauling out is a separate question. Happy to answer that question. We had assumed in the traffic and developing the estimated truck traffic, that trucks leaving the facility would have 20 tons net payload. And so at a maximum delivery day of 500 tons, that would give you 25 trucks leaving the facility. In actual practice, that business is one where you would expect 22 to 24 tons payload in those trucks. And some of them can handle even slightly more than that. This is a business where, for example, the construction and demolition debris, virtually all of that leaves Connecticut today. Much of it goes long haul into western Pennsylvania and into Ohio. Those trucks typically are trucks that are what they call tipper trailers, that are, do not have hydraulic equipment on them, they are not self-unloading. And those trailers are designed to handle the maximum amount of tonnage possibly, possible, and they're typically 24-ton trucks. So again, and also the case with MSW, it's not uncommon these days for trucks to be handling 23 tons or so legally. And the operating scenario for facilities like this is to always maximize your payload, because the cost of fuel, the cost of labor, and the distances involved in bringing this material to disposal facilities. So again, we use 20 tons, and that's 25 trucks.
And what hours will they leave?
They, they'll leave all through the operating day. As the facility is bringing in waste, it's going to be continually leaving the facility.
There was some mention in the testimony last time about there would be, the facility would close at like 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM-
That's correct.
And there would be trucks leaving until when? 6:00?
I believe Mr. Putnam testified the facility will be closed, lights out, by 5:00. That's my recollection.
Nothing, nothing, nothing leaves after 5:00?
My, my recollection-
No trucks operating after 5:00?
My recollection is he was, that was his statement.
Okay. Ms. Sussman, any other?
Yeah, a few. Something's puzzling me here. You said that the municipal solid waste trucks, they've grown, and that they can typically handle more than 7.5 tons.
That's correct.
And then you said that, you know, you want to maximize, you know, use of that capacity on the site. So why are we estimating 7.5 tons?
By using a lower number than what you might typically see on an average basis, we generate a higher number of trucks coming in. So it adds a degree of conservatism in the analysis. And again, this is a maximum, when one goes for a maximum permitted tonnage, you, a facility might be fortunate to hit the maximum on one or two days a year, but it's not, it's not, you know, you can't run at your permit limit every day.
Okay, does the permit limiting this to 500 tons?
The applicant has indicated that that would be the permit limit that they would seek, and that would be contained in a state permit.
Now, Val, can you tell me how long, if you know this, how long does it take for a truck to come in, their way, and then leave?
Sure. Sure. And I was listening a moment ago when you asked the question about 13 trucks an hour, actually the number per hour. It could easily be 13 trucks might enter and leave the facility in an hour, but it would be most unlikely, and first of all, I don't think you could fit 13 trucks up into the tipping area of the-
Excuse me, Val.
Boy, time flies.
Yes, it certainly does. I'm sorry. Fuck that.
Okay.
You're also.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I think you were saying that, you know, the critical timeline here is if you're dumping, so you can't do 13 trucks.
No, I don't, I-
That would be four per bay, per hour.
Well, if, well, in that conversation, in the context of noise generation and multiple trucks being present, you couldn't fit 13 trucks up in that area. That was under discussion at the time. But if we, if we talk about entering the site, I would expect that a truck would enter that site and be off the scales within two minutes. A scale is, the refus business is a repetitive business. The customers are repeat customers. Facilities, when a truck rolls in, they'll have an account with the facility, and they'll be, number of the truck may be the only item that gets entered in, if it's not fully computerized with a speed pass type system. In which case, the truck will be there for perhaps 20 or 30 seconds. But once the truck leaves the scales, it'll continue around the facility as we discussed earlier. If you can just give me a moment?
Sure.
So entering the site, you know, this, a truck would enter that scale and be up and back into the tipping bay within just a couple of minutes. Unloading, the driver is going to, once he's in the facility, the driver's going to get out of his truck, he's going to unhook the back, hit the lever. The material is going to be deposited on the tip floor. He's then going to secure the truck, then going to exit the facility, and be weighed again. I would think within five or six minutes, the truck would enter the site, deposit its material on the tip floor, and leave the site.
Okay, but again, during peak hours, if there was a queuing process, that would probably be after the, after the scale and before they back into the building, right?
If you had multiple vehicles visiting the site, let's say three or four vehicles came in almost all at the same time, one after another, there would be a short queue then at the scale. And let's assume vehicles came up and they had to wait for a moment to get into the tipping floor. We haven't done a queuing, you know, a time analysis. First of all, if we step back and look at, you know, 500 tons per day, you know, what might you expect to see at the facility in a, in a peak hour? It, it's possible you might get, you would use 13 trucks in a peak hour. I think that's entirely possible. On an average basis, that would be-
Well, I was counting 130 trucks, because there were some victims leaving and coming in.
Okay.
So I had to know all that together, and so divide that by 10. I didn't realize I've been working till 5:00 now, but I was using 10 hours, and that's-
Well, deliveries are stopped at 4:00.
Okay, so using the 4:00 then, it's an average of 13 trucks an hour. And I guess there are peak times and there are slow times.
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm, I'm searching for a good way to answer your question, which is the amount of time that it would take to process vehicles, which I think I've answered. If we, if we were to speculate as to, you know, five vehicles or four vehicles entering the site at any given time, how long would it take for all of those vehicles to exit the facility? I would think within 15 or 20 minutes, five vehicles would have, would have been, completed their process.
So like worst case, we're thinking maybe it takes 15 minutes to get in and get out. Worst case.
I would think that's reasonable, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Yarres?
Just a couple of follow-up questions. And I think you may have missed it, but 13's not average. There are peaks, that's at best the average. So if there's some swing time in there, and people break their luck, you're wanting 15 or 20 in your peaks. But I just wanted to go back to your, the presumptions on the number of trucks, and just so I can get where you're coming from. On the MSW, that's really being primarily commercial MSW.
That's correct.
Hosted residential.
That's correct.
And in commercial, it would be residential, it was like a condo, in fact.
That's correct.
But not small camps. So you're not really expecting traffic from the kind of mom-and-pop vehicles that we would normally see in a residential neighborhood. As a, the rare exception in this small-volume construction facility.
You might, you might see some small vehicles coming in, but I think that the majority of the MSW is going to be the large, commercial-type vehicle, yes.
All right, that, this is, thanks. Ms. Cleitrow?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to go over these numbers, just so that we're all clear one more time. And this was submitted tonight on the what's in traffic study, 105 truck deliveries daily. That's 105 in and 105 out. That's 210 trucks.
Would that be correct?
The, it's not 210 trucks, it's 210 trips and, and-
210 trips.
And that's, and that is-
210 trips, right.
And that is the information, it is from this information, this 105 trucks, that the traffic engineer did his analysis.
Right. And then 25 trailer trucks that remove them in the containers a day, right?
That's correct.
So 25 coming in, and 25 going out.
I guess what we're looking for here, excuse me, Ms. Cleitrow, is a clarification of the number of trips that we're seeing with the number of trucks that are coming in and number of-
I'm just trying to confirm their number, Mr. Chairman, which is 284 trips per day, of which 260 are in heavy vehicles. That's all. I just wanted to be sure, we were talking about 105, 105, but it's really 284 trips a day.
The, the information that I have presented here tonight was used by the traffic engineer in doing his work.
That's right. I probably should have asked Mr. Brown to do that, just so we're clear, it's 284.
It is my belief that as we developed this, he took that and then did his traffic analysis.
Right, okay.
Two questions more, Dr. Yarres, two trips out to the facility by owner notes and all.
I'm sorry.
That trip study was for the purposes of, you know, the traffic on the roads, too, which is why you would double, you know, coming in and going out, you know. But on site, I think we're looking, you know, I was asking questions about, you know, cycle time.
Yes, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to, to his report. In addition to, to the truck traffic that we have talked about, we also provided some estimates of employees visiting the facility and pure visitors coming into the site. And that would explain the additional trips. They're not all truck trips, but they are additional trips.
Ms. Cleitrow, any other questions?
No, thank you.
I just had a couple of things that I wanted to ask to get clarification on in the last public hearing. When the, when the trucks are queuing, waiting to be weighed on the scale, if you can explain again how those trucks are going to queue up, how and where they're going to queue up, and then kind of along those lines, what happens when more trucks try to enter the site than the queue can handle? If that, if that is possible, where are they going to line up if they're queuing up to be weighed? If you've got a certain number of trucks coming in per hour?
I wouldn't expect that more trucks would attempt to enter the site than what could be queued on-site. The, excuse me. There's ample space in this driveway to queue two stacks of trucks prior to the scale. And as I noted earlier, the scale time, the scale processing time is extremely minimal.
And then I get the other comment from the first hearing, if the first bay is being utilized, okay, can the trucks, are the trucks still circulating if that first bay is being utilized? They can still, still reflow the movement of trucks?
Yes.
Commission members, any other questions, Ms. Matt?
I, I was saying, you know, the big trucks that come in that are going to take the debris away. So when they come in, they go already around the belly and kind of heading head first into those little slots.
They will back in.
They'll go back in.
Yeah. I apologize.
So they have to bypass the trucks unloading, right? There's room for that?
There is space for that. Trucks come around, they will come down, and then back in.
Mr. Matt?
There were some other trucks that were big storage areas parked up against the back. What are those?
This is a contingency to store either an empty trailer truck that you would be using for contingency purposes. If one of your vehicles that you had arranged to remove waste was, was not on-site, you'd have an empty here, you'd pull it down and put it into the slot. Or for very short-term storage of a trailer awaiting removal from the site.
And how many storage containers are we going to see over there? And one of the things we also didn't talk about, I don't think, in the last hearing is storage of tires also. If you can maybe discuss that a little bit.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, there's room for five, five trailers. I see five slots.
Five trailers or store, five, store actual storage containers?
Five potential, five potential slots for a trailer.
Mr. Chairman, will those be stacked? One on top of, one on top of each other?
Who's a tractor-trailer?
Truck.
So they're going to be side by side?
Yes, side by side.
Container.
Containers.
The trailer containers.
They're trailers.
And, and the size of those? How much can they handle in those?
We've assumed in our traffic analysis that they will handle 20 tons. I'm very confident they'll leave the facility going, oh, more. We did show on the site plan, a covered area for tires. And the reason for that is that a tire may come in in a roll-off container of construction and demolition debris. When you put a roll-off container on a construction site, things show up. And tires are not considered suitable material to send to a construction and demolition debris landfill in some of the states where this, these materials will go. So those tires will temporarily be put undercover, as we showed on the site plan. They will be sent to a tire facility. tires in the United States today are used beneficially. And we have here in Connecticut, primitive facilities that process tires. And tire rubber is a valuable product these days.
They come up in those little pellets to put on those artificial terrify footballs.
There, there are a variety, tire-derived energy. We have a big tire-derived energy facility in eastern Connecticut, that's one very likely used for tires. But there are other folks that process them into a variety of things.
Ms. Cleitrow?
Yeah, I have just one additional question. Is, is then feasible for the containers awaiting, for lack of a better term, technically, the cab to come and take them away, for them to be attached to something, pulled back around the building and stored in the corner until the cab comes to take them away? Is that what you're saying? So it could be filled with waste?
They could have construction debris, or they could have-
Municipal solid waste covered, because you said-
Yes, covered, that's correct.
But you take them from the doors where they accept the waste, around, and you can make that turn, they can make that turn anti-nationalistic on that question, too, that, and then they're stored in that back corner?
They could be.
And could they be stacked on top of the truck?
No.
Okay.
And typically, how long do those storage containers sit there until they're moved out?
Well, you know, our conversations have been focused on a maximum permitted day. If you're pulling out, as our traffic analysis was relied upon, if you're pulling out 25 trailers a day, you know, we don't have space to store very many trailers. Those trailers have to be leaving the site all day long, and they will be doing so. This is a very short-term contingency. We have space for five trailers maximum. I personally would expect that if any trailers are here, the most likely-